Lindsey, record of attendance. Any conflicts of interest?
Your worship, I'll make a motion. We excuse Counselor Dennis from the meeting today.
Oh, right. Second down there.
She is in the hospital. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye contrary, motion carried. And there's one agenda item. Anything else? I have a motion to approve the agenda.
They circulate it, your worship.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye contrary, motion carried. Okay. So, the one item is the Mariner Center expansion. Did you want to take that, or you want me to go through the? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. This morning, on your desk, you'll find a request for decision document. It's three and a half pages, and it reflects with one small edit the document I emailed to council on the weekend. So, let me just start at the CAO comments section, two-thirds of the way down, page one, and I'll come back to the recommendation as we go through it. So, the addition of new recreation facilities at Mariner Center has been one of the top regional priorities for a few years. Executing priorities that require funding from all levels of government requires the alignment of priority projects with policy priorities of higher levels of government and the availability of programs through which to make an application. The most recent example of this sort of opportunity was a successful application for Phase One redevelopment funding for the Yarmouth Ferry Terminal, which was also identified as a regional priority. A new program opportunity, it's the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, has become available at the federal and provincial level, giving rise to a unique opportunity to attract funding for a major project of the nature of the Mariner Center expansion. An intake of applications for the program is expected this year. Notwithstanding the fact that the town sets its own priorities and we participate in regional priority setting, council is being asked to consider this opportunity out of sequence because alignment of program opportunities is not always in the order or sequence that exactly matches our preferred order. There may be an opportunity to engage other communities in this project, broadening the base of support and reducing the financial burden. A comprehensive engagement and critical review of the elements of the expansion identified in the DMA consulting reports has not been undertaken to inform the expansion program. It is recommended that this work, as recommended by the consultant and previously discussed by municipal partners, be undertaken. So, the town and our municipal neighbors identified a Mariner Center expansion as our number-three regional priority in 2016. The number-one priority has not aligned with federal and provincial funding opportunities. That was the Yarmouth Airport. The number-two priority, the ferry terminal, has attracted federal and provincial funding of $6 million, and work is now underway to get the project moving. The new opportunity will become available to apply for funding through a federal-provincial infrastructure program, and we ought to make, or I'm recommending we make, a regional application. Much work is left to be done on this project since the feasibility study was completed. It is recommended that this work can continue and be completed over the next six months or so. This will require additional funding, but it's critical to success in the long term. The project is a regional priority for several reasons. We have an aging indoor recreation infrastructure in our community that is past due for replacement and no longer meets the competitive standards or community expectations. Our area has experienced a trend in population decline. Attracting new working-age people to our region will require having modern amenities comparable to other regions for them and their families. So, Town Council, I'm on page three now. Town Council had previously set placeholders, and I put that in quotes, in our capital budget for Mariner Center expansion and an aquatic center. Using the DMA study as a guide for the application, we should expect to apply for a $35 million project. The local share of the project would be between 9.5 and 11.7 million. We have proposed a cost-sharing formula, which I'll come to in a moment, among the municipal partners using population and uniform assessment, which would make the town taxpayer's share of the project between 2.5 and $3 million. Put differently, it would equate to $1 per day for one year for every resident of the town to fund the town's share. And that same, I guess, breakdown of cost would apply equally to the other municipal units. The conditions outlined above are important to a long-term successful project. So, let me pause there and go straight to the recommendation. We'll come back, okay? So, what are the conditions? So, the recommendation is that the town of Yarmouth support the formation of an intermunicipal steering committee for the purpose of moving forward with an expansion of Mariner Center with the following initial mandates. In anticipation of an impending intake of applications under the federal-provincial infrastructure programs, prepare an application for federal and provincial funding prior to June 30th, 2019. Conditional the following deliverables being completed under the direction of the intermunicipal steering committee. A, an operational agreement be struck with partners, including but not limited to the municipalities of the District of Yarmouth and the municipality of the District of Argyle. B, a capital and ownership agreement be struck with partners, including but not limited to the municipalities of the District of Yarmouth and the municipality of the District of Argyle. And that the financial funding of operations and capital contributions between the municipal partners be based on a formula, which includes variables, including but not limited to population and uniform assessment. The vision and mandate work, as suggested in the DMA consulting reports, which has begun by the municipal leadership of the three municipalities of Yarmouth County, be completed prior to October 1st, 2019. And that a comprehensive engagement and critical review of the elements of the expansion identified in the DMA consulting reports be undertaken to inform the expansion program. So, those are the conditions. So, to move back, page three. So, just under the financial piece. So, how do we deal with the financial element? The work of preparing the application and completing the upfront work will require a budget. And that budget, I had previously indicated to council in order of magnitude that I thought that might be. I've withdrawn that number or that range at this point. I think more discussion around that is necessary. And obviously, the timeline in which we want to complete that work will, to some degree, drive how much external or additional resource we need. Once an application is approved, expenses will become part of the project budget, clearly. Preparatory costs would need to be borne by the municipal partners. Capital funding could be supplied in one of five different ways or a combination, I guess is the fifth one. Four different ways. Borrowed by Mariner Center and repaid by the municipal partners. So, Mariner Center is a municipal corporation. It could apply for debt to finance the expansion and then be repaid by the municipal partners over time. No, the airport hasn't done that.
No, it hasn't, but it's that type of a...
In terms of its governing structure? Yes.
Okay.
It could be borrowed directly by the municipal partners, so we could decide we want to use debt to fund this, or each partner could make their own decision, but we could do that independently and directly. Either case, the funding would go through the municipal finance corporation, and you get preferred, you get the same bond rates as the province of Nova Scotia. The expansion could be funded from reserves, reserve funds for capital purposes, or it could be funded through taxation over a couple of years, or any combination of the above. The only thing that would not apply is if the application for funding through the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program were successful. Gas tax could not be used because gas tax is not stackable with infrastructure programs. So, for your information, if you refer back to our capital budget from last year, we had made a provisional placeholder in our capital planning for $2.525 million for associated projects. And so, it's been on our radar at the appropriate level for a project of this scope. We did not schedule that expense, but it has been in our capital planning. All of the noted funding options are feasible for the town of Yarmouth, and all could be accomplished over a number of years, ranging from perhaps four to 20 years. The use of any of the options would not eliminate the possibility of funding other capital needs using the same mechanisms, with the exception of using reserves. So, once you use the reserves, they're gone. We have ability to allocate taxation. We have the ability to take on debt, or we have the ability to have our municipal corporations take on that debt. So, those options still exist. So, there are many stakeholders in this project, and the expectations will need to be managed. What we have is an opportunity; we don't have a guarantee. So, the question is, is with an opportunity where you have the alignment of provincial and federal infrastructure programs with a project that is ready at the application stage, do you take a swing at it? Do you try to bring together the local interests and at least take a shot? Or do you let it go? And at this point, I think what I'm, well, I'm recommending to you that you consider taking a swing at this project. But again, there are no guarantees; it is an opportunity. I will pause there. I think that's about all I had to say in the request for decision, and there's probably lots of questions, so I'll pause there, your worship, and if you have any questions, I'm happy.
Neil, I need one door open. Sorry.
That's the law.
It's the law.
That's the law.
Thank you, sir.
Your worship, do you want a motion to put it on the table then we have the discussion, or you want to have a discussion first?
Well, we need a motion to...
Your worship, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation that the town of Yarmouth support the formation of an intermunicipal steering committee for the purpose of moving forward with an expansion to Mariner Center with the following initial mandates. And they are on this recommendation, A, B, and C, your worship.
Thank you. Moved and seconded? Thank you, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Well, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to start with a couple of things. First off, I believe it is time. It's absolutely time to move on from other things that we've been looking at and look at this. It's time to do this. So, I support this wholeheartedly, but I do have a question. Of course, what we're talking about here is gathering together a group from the municipalities and putting that together. Have the other municipalities been informed that we're moving forward with this? We're at least looking at moving forward to this? And have you gauged any interest on their end?
Okay, so first of all, I just spoke with the MLA and the MP on Friday. That's when I spoke to them, and as soon as I did that, I basically spoke with the CAO to say, how do we pull this together quickly? It's, the funding is, we have to do this quickly. So, I did send an email out to both of the wardens and the CAOs of the other units outlining that fact, what revenue streams are possible, and that we would be getting together this morning because we just want to make sure that we're not doing this in isolation. They just, they needed to know. So, they're aware of it, yes.
So, my belief is that, well, we cannot do this on our own. We have to do it with our municipal partners.
Absolutely.
And that's the only way this is going to work. But I do believe that this is the proper move. It's time for us to move on and get this built. Thank you.
Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, do you envision or see, it says, an operational agreement be struck with the partners, including but not limited to the District of Yarmouth and the municipality of District of Argyle? Do you see any movement that we might be able to go just a little farther adrift? Maybe municipality of Clare might be interested in a portion because, you know, when you're talking Salmon Rivers, Metagans, it's closer to come to Yarmouth than it is probably sometimes to go to St. Anne's University, and the same way with Barrington. It wouldn't have a facility of this scope in the county of Shelburne.
Go ahead.
Your worship, when I jotted that down, my thoughts were, in the forefront of my thoughts was the municipality of Barrington, particularly, and maybe further in Shelburne County. I hadn't thought so much about Clare, but that doesn't mean it isn't an equal possibility. I know they have an aquatic center at the university, and I don't know what the level of interest would be, but it certainly should be explored.
Okay, thank you. And your worship, the other question is, this application has to be in by June, I understand, Jeff? So, you can put an application in without having a finished product, right? So, you can put the application in, and the scope of the project on the Mariner Center, complex? It's not a finished product that you send in and said, this is what we're doing. You're applying for funding right now.
Yes, we need, the suggestion is to apply before the end of June.
Okay.
After that, we're not too sure how much federal funding will be coming out. The other piece to the timeframe question is, under recommendations, it's, we're talking about, there's a date in there, October the 1st, 2019. So, that date is for the vision and mandate work. It's not about what would go into the center. Obviously, we all have to sit down and agree on that, but it's about the vision and mandate. Who runs it? What does it look like, you know, operations, those pieces? So, it's separate from what you would build. It's how does it get, how does it get run?
I know Jessica Nether is going to answer that question, but how do you envision the steering committee? That's, Jeff, do you have an idea on that? And that's the only questions I have, your worship.
Or the makeup of the steering committee?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so, can I just address three things there? The, in terms of the intake, that date, the June date, was put in there, anticipating that they would open the program. But even if they don't open the program, we should be, my sense is that you want to be in early with your application, and that's approximately five months. So, it was put in there to put a level of urgency around it, but there is no hard date as far as when the program will be open. That's not known yet for, you know, when we would have to have this done. It was put in there to give a sense of around that time and to set a target. The October date around the vision. So, the vision work was work that Jim Morgenstern had recommended at the, in his needs report that he did for us. And it was work that we never undertook, and it isn't critical. It isn't critical that it be done before the application, but it is, I think, important that it be done alongside. But I, in my mind, because it isn't quite as critical timewise, you may not agree with that, but I felt that we could put a mark in the ground a little further out to complete that work. The third piece, and I didn't jot down, the third question was around...
The makeup?
The makeup of the steering committee. So, obviously, we'll need a steering committee. Obviously, the three municipal units need to be bought in. But again, when I was drafting these few pages for council, I wasn't committing a lot of time to consideration of who else might be on that steering committee, but I think that's to be left to the municipal leadership to determine.
Maybe Fat Counselor Erwin would have to comment on that since he was the last page of project.
So, are you good?
Good.
Hang on, I got Jim first. Go ahead, Jim.
I'm going to support the recommendation by our CAO and the motion for the project. It's very important for me and the CAO and the staff and the steering committee to make sure that the recommendations, A, B, and C, are adhered to 125 percent. In the past, I felt that the town has paid more than its share, and this time, I want it to be shared appropriately by our three, by the three municipalities. So, I repeat, I'm in favor of the project. It's a good project. Thank you very much, everybody who's participated in getting it this far.
Okay. I have a question for the deputy. We made the motion, but that encompasses the entire recommendation?
Yeah, I did A, B, and C, yeah.
Right, A, B, and C, but then there's the vision and mandate work and the comprehensive engagement underneath that.
Yep.
Who seconded that? Yeah, okay. So, it's the whole recommendation that you made the motion on? Okay, good. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor, your worship.
How firm is this proposal in respect? How firmly are we committed to the sharing formula?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, what I had to say about the formula was that it would include at least two variables. I think it should be a formula-driven thing, and it should be based on at least those two variables, population and uniform assessment. They're pretty standard variables for intermunicipal cost-sharing. I left it open that there might be other variables that the partners may wish to include in there. But I think that, you know, population, if you build this, nobody's going to use it like people. And so, population is the driver. The uniform assessment is a measure of our tax base and our ability as municipalities to pay on behalf of our taxpayers. And so, that's the rationale for those two, but there may be other variables.
So, does that uniform, does that formula operate in this manner? There are approximately 11,000 people in the municipality of Yarmouth, 6,600 people in the town of Yarmouth, and around six or so in Argyle. If you apply that formula that you're speaking to, the town of Yarmouth would pay 24%, 25%, Argyle 24% or 25%, and municipality of Yarmouth would pay 50%. Am I correct? Or close to it?
Yeah, yep.
Little bit off.
Yep, Argyle's bigger than we are.
Do they pay maybe 26, we pay 24?
We pay 26, they pay 29.
29. And the municipality of Yarmouth would pay how much?
Close to, closer to 45, 44, 45 percent.
The next question I have is, we have an operating deficit which has crept up over 10 years from $0 to $240,000 or $50,000 per year for the current facility. It is not shared on the basis of that formula at the present time. Is that correct?
That's right.
Is it proposed that the operating costs will be shared amongst the municipal units on the same basis?
So, what's proposed in the recommendation is that an operational agreement be struck with partners, including the other municipalities, and that it is my position that the capital and operating agreements ought to be based on formula. So, as...
As it ought to be.
Well, we have to...
That's what I'm recommending to you. If you accept the recommendation, then that's our position.
And then finally, when is it proposed that we will pull together the necessary agreement with respect to this funding formula in terms of the timelines you put forward in the memo?
I don't see making the application without the capital and operating agreements in place.
Thank you. I have no further questions, your worship.
Okay.
I'll be voting in favor of the motion.
Can we have your light? Anybody, anything else? We've had that placeholder for three years, have we not? The two and a half million, ready to go, pretty much?
We've had, we've had it in our consciousness for sure since the work that Mariner Center was leading with DMA consulting was underway. We've had, we've had it in mind. We didn't actually put it to paper till last year in terms of adding it right in our capital budget plan, 2.5 million.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And when we speak about drawing down reserves to fund this, will this drawdown have any impact on our commitment earlier this year to proceed with the Parade Street Water Sewer Project, which I know is gas tax money-driven? But will it impair our ability to do that project, which is currently lined up ahead of anything like this?
Yeah. So, your worship, I don't anticipate, and I wouldn't have recommended to you to undertake this approach to this project if I thought that it would impair our program of infrastructure renewal within the town generally. We fund those things through depreciation. Taxation that we collect cover our depreciation, reinvest in our infrastructure. There's no question when you talk about using your political might to go after a project like this, it may affect your ability to attract other major capital grants for other projects. So, you, again, this is sequencing, but it won't affect our ability to do what we consider our share. And if we can't attract infrastructure funding through a program such as this for the Parade Street project, then we can flip and look at the gas tax because you can't use both on the same project.
The other thing, we may as well just put it on the table here, is that we're saying yes to this. We're putting the Arts Center, for example, the Arts Center and other projects, on the back burner, which we need to be okay with.
Reordering our priority.
Yes, absolutely. And this has been a priority, obviously. It's been, we're just waiting, we were just waiting to see if there's funding and when funding comes about, or the ability, because there's no promises, remember? It's the federal level, the provincial level, so no promises there. But we understand that if everything's aligned, then we would be good to go. So, we just put the other stuff on the back burner. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Well, as I said before, when it comes to that, I've been saying it for a while. After, you know, trying to move forward with the other project, the time's come to move on. It's time to get one major project done, and this is the one. So, I support that 100 percent. My question, and steal from Deputy Mayor Mooney, because it's usually his great question, and that's, what's the next step when it comes to getting this thing together? We need to know what the structure of the steering committee's going to look like. I did steal that from you. That's what you were going to say, isn't it? It is time, it is time to... It's time, it's time not to waste any more time.
Exactly.
And it's time to decide what we need to do. For example, we see members of recreation here, and I've always said that recreation should be part of this as well as other entities. So, we need to decide what we're going to do and how we're going to move forward here, quickly.
Okay, so, can we, are you okay for here? Go ahead, CAO, do you know what the next step is?
Well, I know what some of the next steps are. One of, well, obviously, the first one would be for you guys to ratify. So, we're in the committee the whole session, so you can ratify later today, you can ratify on Thursday. That's your choice. Take the time necessary to feel comfortable with your decision. Once you've made a decision, and even before you make that decision, we will provide the details to our municipal neighbors in terms of where council is thinking if this motion passes, and we will ask them to consider the same question. Do they want to move forward? Because we can't do this by ourselves, and we can't do it with just one municipal partner, I would suggest. I think we need the county pulling together on this at least. And so, the next step is pull together the municipal group. And if we can do that, then we get to questions around the work that needs to be done. How, you know, if we agree on this, who's going to do the work? Who's going to lead it? How are we going to pay for it? And to the steering committee is, what is the composition of it? Are there others? There may be others in this room who should be part of that steering committee. So, we need to make some, we need to agree that we're going to do this, that we're going to make, take a swing at this. And then we need to agree how we're going to do that. And there will be a lot of work to do in a fairly short time. But again, it's an alignment of support and interest and policy and potentially funding. So, it's a good time to get at her.
Deputy?
Your worship, and I know, I think our council meeting always is the, I think the municipality of Argyle, they meet before, so maybe if we call the meeting right after this, instead of like, we're always like a dog chasing his tail. We're always either behind or ahead. So, maybe if we confirm this at the committee the whole and then call the special council meeting just after this?
As long as everybody's okay.
Ratify it, and then we'll have it on the table. And those guys, I think they meet sometimes this week. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Well, yeah, and it's, I mean, we called this meeting as well, too, because of the time, because of the timeframe. Does anybody disagree to do, to, go ahead there, Counselor?
Yeah, I do. I think we should wait until Thursday night to ratify it. Frankly, I'm not sure that anyone on the other side, unless you're privy to it, has heard about it. At least give them a chance to chew on and see what they can do. But it's not necessarily, I'm just thinking we should follow our normal procedures on this one. If we can get ready from this, from, when did I find out? About noon time on Friday and get a copy of this Saturday? and get a copy of this Saturday? I think we can wait until Thursday to make a final decision and if we choose to do so, change your mind.
So, we're, and that's.
When do we put this in our hands? That's the question, when do we put this in our hands? Right away?
Sorry.
Yeah, right away?
This document in your hand? When will we put it in?
Theirs?
Their hands? It's a public document right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been tabled at council here or at committee hall.
That's my idea.
And I will, I will send it myself as well too, right? I mean, we just, we just got this too. And keeping in mind that, that the recommendation is to form that steering committee, we're not doing anything but forming that steering committee with some parameters. It's as simple as that, really, so.
What, you're going to call question, Counselor? Question?
Any, anybody?
Question on the motion.
Okay, question's called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, unanimous.
Motion to adjourn, your worship.
Motion to adjourn. Good to go. So, it's on the agenda for council Thursday evening and I will send out, I'll send this out to the wardens and CAOs, yeah.